Everyone, welcome to our July 18th Board of Education meeting. Board Member Craighead, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Yes, please, Ryan.
Sorry, my mic's not on. We welcome those who are here for the purposes of addressing the board at the proper time and in the order of their request. If you wish to speak to an item during the meeting, please fill out a form indicating your name and the agenda item you wish to address. Letty said, do we have any additional comments? Okay, thank you. You may also request to get testimony on an item not listed for discussion today. However, full discussion on any items not listed on the agenda will have to be delayed until such a time as they can be publicly posted in advance as a regular agenda item. If you wish to ask questions, please address them to the Chair and not to any individual members of the board or staff. In closed session today, the board approved a general release of all claims in case number 20STCV13686, providing consideration and release of claims. The vote was unanimous with all five members participating in the vote. Public hearing today, we have none. Item 10, call for agenda items for separate action adoption of the agenda as posted. Ms. Takash?
Yes, we'd like to request an amendment to item 19.2, the facility's master plan, to include the appendices to the master plan. The item as originally posted included the master plan, and we'd like to add the appendices as part of the official record. The agenda item has subsequently been changed to include the appendices. So that's available online at the moment.
Dr. Baker?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd also like to pull item 19.5 and move that for placement on the August 17th agenda.
Okay, any other changes, Dr. Baker? Okay, do we need an emotion?
I move approval as amended. Second.
Any discussion? Let's take our vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? No? So that passes 5-0. Approval of minutes from our June 22nd meeting.
Move approval. Second.
Any discussion? Let's take our vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes 5-0. Recognizations and acknowledgements, our students, staff, and school celebrations. Mr. Itzen.
Hi there, my name is Jesse Quinteros, and I'm the School Counselor at Avalon K-12. So Jesse is a kid from Long Beach, born and raised. I first attended Patrick Henry Dual Immersion School. From there, I went on to DeMille, and then from there, I went on to Cabrillo High School. At Cabrillo, I had a lot of caring teachers, and I felt like that was what I needed at the moment. So now, you know, I'm a school counselor thanks to all those awesome experiences that I got to go through at Cabrillo. Growing up, I wanted to become a mechanic just like my dad, and it took me a very long time to discover this passion for school counseling. But I know that when that opportunity came up, I didn't hesitate to just jump on board. Working with students one-on-one, that's where I feel like I'm the most helpful, proud to be a school counselor.
That's great, and recently promoted head counselor at Avalon, so congratulations to Jesse. Full circle, right, from elementary through, and then he got his Masters in Counseling from Gacy, Long Beach, so the whole Long Beach promise there. Item 13, public testimony on items listed on our agenda. I have our speakers that have filled out their forms here. We'll start with Kaia Batra. Kaia Batra? Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Hello, everyone. My name is Kaia Batra, and I just recently graduated from Poly High School. First of all, thank you all so much for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. So when I first joined this campaign two years ago, it was just four students: Diana Michelson, Hamid Toravzadeh, Victoria Quatch, and myself. Never could I have imagined that this campaign would grow the way it did, reaching students, teachers, parents, and community leaders all around Long Beach. It has been so inspiring to see how many of us share the same passion for the environment and the same goal of transforming our city and schools into a more sustainable one. I am so grateful to everyone who has provided us with support in every way possible. A special thank you to the facilities team, Mr. Miranda, Mr. Rising, and Ms. Mogi, for continually collaborating with us to perfect our format to present our ambitions here today. And most of all, thank you to the board members, Ms. Craighead, Mr. Otto, Dr. Benitez, Ms. Kerr, and Mr. Miller, for helping us to finally realize this two-year-long dream. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Pete Marsh. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, thank you. All right. Good evening, I'm Pete Marsh, thank you. This is our superpower, and I want to thank you for your direction to staff to ditch fossil fuels. The draft board policy 3510.1 that's before you tonight is a great step in the right direction. Following up on Mr. Miller's and Dr. Benitez's support this morning for including date commitments, I would offer a friendly amendment which currently to paragraph, this should go in paragraph 2A, which currently states, "The district commits to the goal of decarbonizing its machinery and equipment in all end-use energy sectors, including HVAC, water heating, laundry, cooking, and landscape maintenance." What we could add is, "Currently known budgets and recapitalization cycles will achieve 100% decarbonized operations by 2045, and the district's goal is to prioritize supplemental budgets and bond issues to accelerate this target date by 2040." I've brought a written copy of that and would just ask politely if you would consider that since you expressed interest. I'd also like to return to why this is so critical. Diana mentioned this morning 27 extreme heat days per year coming to a city near and dear to us. What would that mean? India, Europe, and Pakistan and India offer a hint. This week and last week, at least 1,000 deaths in Portugal and Spain alone during the current week-long European heat wave. Two months ago, the city of Jacobabad in Pakistan experienced 51 degrees Celsius or 124 Fahrenheit during the record-chattering heat wave in India and Pakistan. Several locations approached wet bulb temperatures of 3 degrees Celsius, the limit of human survivability, and this is the coolest summer of the rest of our lives. Joe Manchin last week announced his latest delaying ruse on any hope for federal legislation to address climate. We in rational states and cities must act boldly since our federal legislators are letting us down. There are 19 states around the nation that have passed state laws prohibiting cities from banning gas in buildings, which is one of the critical steps we need to take. Wall Street Journal ran another op-ed this morning, as they do several times a week, making false assertions about renewable energy and unreliability. We are the first generation that has felt the impacts of the climate crisis firsthand, and we are the last that can do anything to minimize the impacts that we are already feeling. Thank you again. Please use our superpower, livable ecosystems, the global economy, and even humanity's ability to self-govern literally depend on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Fatima Iqbal-Zumar.
Thank you, Fatima Iqbal-Zumar, thank you. Yes, I'm here to speak in strong support of board policy 3510.1. My name is Fatima, I'm a former teacher, executive board member of the Democratic Party, mother, you know, raising my family and really close to this area. I first want to thank all the board members who have worked with the students on this because it's not always that you have leaders who understand the urgency of young people's futures, so a big thank you to all of you. Also want to thank the students, because I always say, you know, young people should not be fighting, you know, for this, they should be going to school and enjoying their lives, but the fact that they have to fight because so many of our leaders aren't is so commendable that they're putting their time into this, so congratulations to all of you. You know, I, like I mentioned, I'm a delegate, part of this district, which includes a lot of North Long Beach, and the district I live in, personally, I'm very affected, my students are very affected by this, we have over a third of the state's refineries and drilling, and, you know, we all know schools are one of the biggest, right, sort of uses of the fossil fuel industry, and so this is a really, really important step. And so I hope that you all vote yes on this for sure, but what happens later is important too. I hope you implement it to not just meet the goals, but beat the goals that you have set for all of these different sections of the resolution. To me, this issue is, you know, non-negotiable, that the implementation of it is non-negotiable. Any way I could help, as a current delegate, as a community advocate, I'm happy to work with each of you. So thank you again for working with the students, and I hope you all support this strongly today.
Thank you. Next, we have Patrick Gillogly? Gillogly, sorry, thank you, board member. Oh.
Good evening, my name's Patrick Gillogly. I've seen a lot of you guys in our Zoom meetings, I've been kind of the quiet box in the Zooms and the quiet voice in the back of the rooms as well, because really, this whole program, this whole campaign has been run by, led by, organized by, dreamed up by these kids. And when Diana Michelson first approached me two years ago about this, I had no idea what the path forward was going to look like, and honestly, she didn't really either. And I just, I'm really here to speak to say thank you so much for letting us be a part of the discussions in these rooms, because this, I think, very early on when we met first with Ms. Kerr, it was pretty clear, I think, to everybody that these aren't just kids that are waving signs and demanding, you know, save the earth. They're actually very well-researched and very practical and very realistic and somewhat naive, just as I am as well, and I think this whole process has been a great education for all of us. But I would really like to express my thanks to the facilities team in particular, Mr. Rising, Mr. Miranda, and Ms. Mogi have been incredible in terms of listening to these kids and believing that they have something to offer to the whole process as well. And that's just been one of the great honors of my professional career of 28 years here in Long Beach Unified School District to work with these kids. I am so impressed by them, and I am so thankful to all of you for taking up the vote on this policy. I really hope we can make it happen. I am significantly less long-winded than I usually am in my class, so in honor of my Model UN students, I yield my time to the Chair.
Thank you. Rohan Reddy? Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, my name is Rohan Reddy, ready to get this board policy passed. I'm a Rising senior at Poly, and I have been working with the Green Schools Campaign for over a year now. I would like to take a moment to express my deep gratitude for the board members and facilities team for working with us students to form board policy 3510.1. Thank you all for so frequently meeting with us, for listening to us, and for collaborating so closely with us throughout this process. This school district is truly special because of how considerate you all are of the needs of us students. Seeing the success we have had through working together has inspired me and given me hope for the future. Watching the world burn, flood, and decay is truly painful, but that sense of existential dread has been fading over the past few months because of all of the progress we have made together. To be frank, the main roadblock I see for creating this kind of change on a national or worldwide scale is just politics. Deep divisions plague the world and prevent change, and that worries me. However, it is refreshing to see that LBUSD does not have that problem, that we are part of the solution instead. We have all united in our vision for a safer city and a safer earth. Together, we are saving the world one step at a time. So once again, thank you all.
Thank you. Next, we have Sunny Scarlett. Good evening, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Hi, I'm Sunny Scarlett, and I'm Diana's mom, and this is my first time speaking, but I can tell you, I've done a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff, I've helped make teachers and buttons and signs, and I was there the first time Diana came to me with this idea, and she just had gone to a seminar online and was so excited, and I, it's amazing to watch it, how far it's come, how hard she's worked, how much dedication she has had, and all of these students, they're amazing. I have four children, one recent grad from Poly, Diana is the second, and then I have two little ones at Longfellow right now, and this is so important, there's nothing, I'm not going to say there's nothing more important, but right now, this is one of the primary, climate change and the environment and everything we do to take care of, the only planet that we have, it's the most important. And I just want to thank everybody here at the board for the respect they've shown these students, the guidance they've shown these students. These students, and I'm not going to call them kids, I almost called them kids, they have learned and grown so much, it's incredible, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Diana Michelson. Nice to have you back again, Diana.
Thank you, yeah, second time. Okay, it's been two incredible years, well, 16 months technically, but I think it's important to start where I started. I was 5'2", 10th grade. I've grown two inches in the last two years, which I understand physically is not significant, but symbolically, it means the world, because those two inches that I've grown, I've done under LBUSD. And we'll start with the staff, we'll start with the teacher, Mr. Gillogly, I have to point you out here. I came to him 10th grade year, I, like my mom had just said, I came out of a seminar, I was like, this is crazy, we should do it, and she looked at me like, you're crazy, I have a ma, I mean, my cousin is a superintendent of Pennsylvania School District, you'll never get this done, and I was like, so I went to Mr. Gillogly. Mr. Gillogly had known me for approximately two weeks, if we're being honest, and I think it was his optimism, this overworked man, he's a Model UN teacher, he's an APUS teacher, he is a father, he's, I mean, you know the man, you know and love the man. He pretty much was like, you know what, Diana, let's do it. We had no idea what we were getting into, besides one course of AP Environmental Science work, I had no idea what environmental policy was, how to take, how to get anything done. But you crafted a facility where I could do that. You know, all of the board members that I'm looking at have spent numerous hours, you know, I have reached, we've reached out to you, you've taken the time to schedule these meetings, these long email threads, it's amazing. And then, most recently, Ms. Mogi, who's been really assisting significantly on actually writing the board policy 3510, and then in addition to Mr. Rising and Mr. Miranda, it's just, you guys have crafted this amazing opportunity for students like me, for students like all those behind me, to have a chance to shape a document. And with that being said, first of all, my most utmost gratitude, that, that's amazing, just first off, that a student like me who, I mean, let's be real, I think I learned more in this building than anywhere else. The experiences here have just been amazing. But then, you know, bringing it back to, I want my brother, who's also there, to have the same opportunity. My brother is going to 4th grade, my little sister's going to 2nd, you know, 10 years, unfortunately, means a lot in terms of sea level rise, in terms of heating, and that is terrifying for me. And so that's why today is a beautiful opportunity for us to make a change, for us to ensure that other students like me, like my brother and sister, like the ones following them, have the opportunity to also learn in this room, to be in the room, and to meet all of you and learn how to make policies, that's crazy. So thank you so much, and I really hope we can vote yes today. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our last item, a public testimony on items listed on the agenda. We'll move on to public testimony on items not listed on the agenda. And our first speaker is Maria Isabel Lopez. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, board members. My name is Maria Isabel Lopez, and I recently ran for the LBUSD District 1 School Board seat. I'd like to bring to your attention an urgent irregularity regarding the certification of the June 2022 LBUSD election results that I was recently made aware of and believe requires immediate investigation and resolution. On July 9th, I received a certificate from the Los Angeles Register's Office indicating that I was declared the winner of the general election held in June. I was puzzled by this notice and immediately contacted the Registrar's Office, which again confirmed that I had been certified the winner of the June 2022 election. I was also informed that I would not be moving to a runoff election and needed to contact the Superintendent of Schools to discuss next steps. I spoke with your Executive Secretary as a follow-up to an email sent to her on July 12th regarding the notice received by the Registrar's Office. She informed me that I was mistaken, since the general election is planned for November, and the election results need to be certified by several entities, including LBUSD. However, upon further review of several city and district documents, I believe that the source of confusion is grounded in the Long Beach City Charter. Per the charter, the election held on June 2022 was a general school board election for the school district. The charter states, "The primary and general election for members of the Board of Education shall be held on Tuesday in April and in the first Tuesday after the first Monday in June respectively. I understand that the city of Long Beach and LBUSD passed respective motions to move the primary and general elections. I also know that an adopted city ordinance reflects an alignment of the primary and general election within the statewide election dates. However, I am not sure that a court order was issued to make this proposed election change take effect in accordance with the process outlined by state law. I know that the voters of Long Beach have not voted to make an amendment to the city charter to change the election cycle. Furthermore, a California Court of Appeals held that SB 415 did not apply to charter cities like Long Beach. I'm not sure about the legal provisions currently in place to move the LBUSD general election to November 2022, but I know there's a serious election irregularity here that needs to be addressed since I was, since I received a certificate. I have not been informed that the board supervisors have set aside, the certification aside, or what the legal parameters for doing that are. I'd like to make clear that I'm, that I am working to follow what the law requires. I have every intention of running in the November election, but we must operate within the confines of the law in order to maintain the integrity of our election process."
Thank you, your three minutes are up. Thank you. Mr. North, can you provide some clarification on this subject?
Sure, as you know, this item is not on the agenda, and so there can't be any action taken on this, but yeah, we became aware that the Registrar made the mistake that was referenced in the public comment by Ms. Lopez. It was an unfortunate mistake, we understand that they've now acknowledged that mistake. In January of 2022, this board called for the primary election to be held on June 7th and the general to be held in November. It was advertised as a primary, the candidates ran as a primary, so that was a primary election. Under the city charter, which creates the school district, in order for any candidate to win at the primary level, they would have had to have won a majority of the votes. And since no candidate in District 1 won a majority of the votes, the top two candidates, therefore, have to proceed in the November general. So we look forward to the November general.
So at this point, nothing else that our district is doing or needs to do regarding the November general?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Next, we have, excuse the pronunciation, Kashuna Buckner? Did I pronounce your name correctly?
Kishana.
Kashana, welcome, good evening.
Thank you so much, thank you for allowing me to speak today. This is off agenda, but I, I am here because I wanted to, felt concerned that this needed to be addressed. For my daughter, she was, excuse me, she was tested positive for COVID. She was attending summer school here at Long Beach Wilson. I called the school because she was at home, she tested positive, so I said, well, they said that she has so many hours, she would be dropped. So because of the positive test results, I said, well, she's not able to come to school, but she's not at school, she's going to be dropped. I called the school district, and they advised me that I would need to come and speak to the board, come to a board meeting, that's why I'm here, to address that. I don't know if there's any concerns, any thing that she can do or any other students that may have this issue. As for, she was doing work online as well during the time that she had documentation that she was tested positive, and then because of she's not going to school, they dropped her from the online access as well. And so that is another one of my concerns that I wanted to address, to why are these students aren't able to go to school for testing positive? They want them to stay at home but not come at school, but then they're dropped if they're missing so many hours, they aren't able to do anything online as well. She's been through a lot, and she just wants to go and finish, you know, what she needs to be done to keep her head for next year. I would like to, you know, see if there's anything that can be done, they said that there's nothing, this has been in place, and these are the rules for the summer. So that's my reasoning I'm here. Thank you so much for listening to me, and I thank you for any consideration that you may have.
Thank you, because it's a non-agenda item, we can't speak directly to the item, but Dr. Baker, will have staff follow up with this?
Yes, thank you, I was going, I'm looking at Dr. Camarino for follow-up.
Thank you, so Dr. Camarino is right here, Kashana, in front of you, can you wave your hand? He'll be following up.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have Tim Gilmore. Good evening, welcome.
First, I want to say, thanks, Green Team. I've got my picture taken with them, which is really great. The second thing I want to talk about, I want to thank, first of all, Mr. Tim Gilmore, my name is Tim Gilmore, Poly alumni, I started Poly Alumni Association back in 2012, and then I want to thank also Mr. Leonard Adams for getting hoops after not running again, which is really great, along with Mr. Franklin Sims. And also, I do want to thank Mr. David Miranda, Facilities, for doing a great job presentation. I was just watching it there on Zoom, and I thought it was really well-done. I would like to see if they, maybe there'd be a fundraising strategy added to it, which would kind of help out with, obviously, the cost affected. Tonight, though, I want to talk about the same thing as we talked about beforehand, we have some Poly alums in the house, that is basically, I want to see if we can get Poly Football back to Poly High School for a limited amount of scheduling. And this is something that's really supported by the coaches and the alumni and the community. First, it would save a lot of money, obviously, with, instead of going to Vets, it's about $6,000 at Vets Stadium, and it could save a lot if you had it back at Poly High School, so that's the first main thing. The other thing is definitely improve the morale of the community and so on, with the alumni and PTA and all the people around that go to the Poly Football games, and I think that would be lifting, but the real thing is the tradition that Poly High School has, they have a lot of varsity NFL players that have come out of that school, Juju Schuster, Dee Andrews, Deshaun Jackson, I mean, the list goes on and on and on. This is something that we really need to do, we really need to support this and find a way to make this happen. I know, obviously, there's money out there, there's these 200 million in Measure E funds, so it's not a money issue, so we need to concentrate on it, and I'd like to see, maybe, next meeting, we could probably put it on the agenda and open it up for the public a little bit more. And the last thing is also too, we have a Midtown Cleanup, which is August 6 at MacArthur Park, which everyone is invited to do, to go forth. I thank you for your time, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Rogelio Lopez. Good evening, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. So my name is Rogelio Lopez, District One, constituent, teacher and husband. As noted in the previous presentation by Marisol Lopez, we would be here today to witness the swearing-in of Maria Isabel Lopez as Long Beach District One Board Member as per the city charter. Now let me read the certificate we received. State of California, County of Los Angeles, I Dean C. Logan, Registrar/Recorder, County Clerk of the County of Los Angeles, State of California. Do hereby certify that at an election held said county, in said county on the 7th day of June 2022, Maria Isabel Lopez was duly elected to the Office of Governing Board Member, Long Beach Unified School District, District One. Witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and affix my official seal this first day of July 2022. I have the certificate here. Now, there is still question as to whether the resolution adopted by the board is sufficient to supersede the charter's mandates. It is prudent that the district and the board look into and work to achieve clarity on this legal matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. North, is there any further clarification that you'd like to provide?
No, I think I've already provided it. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public testimony on items not listed on the agenda. We will continue on to our next agenda item, which is staff report. We have none tonight, and so we will move on to business items and Item 16.1, Certificated Personnel Report. Mr. Miller?
Yes, I present the following proposed actions prepared by the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resource Services, approved and recommended by the superintendent. For certificated personnel, appointments, we have 141. End service changes, we have 371. Leaves of absence, we have seven. Resignations, we have seven. Retirements, we have five. Amendments, we have one. And rescissions, we have one. That's for certificated personnel.
I move approval?
Second.
Any discussion?
Oh, is David not here? Oh, he just stepped out. Okay. I was going to ask him to speak to the number of why there were such high numbers today and he explained to me that this was due to the hiring for summer school. So I just wanted to give, yeah, summer school and Head Start, correct. So I just wanted to give you guys-
So then you just gave the explanation for it.
Correct. But you know, it's better from him and it's his department.
I think you did fine. Good job. Did you hear Mr. Otto? Any further discussion? Okay, let's take our vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes 5-0. Next item, 16.2, Classified Personnel Report. Mr. Miller?
Once again, I present the following proposed actions prepared by the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resource Services, approved and recommended by the superintendent. For classified and exempt personnel, appointments, we have 123. Leaves of absence, we have 15. Terminations, we have one. Separations or deceased, we have one. Resignations, we have 17. Retirements, we have six. And amendments, we have two.
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, so on, within the report today, we have an employee who started with the district in 1989 and he's retiring, Mr. Dale Colton. And so I just wanted to recognize him as I can guarantee that there's at least one employee that he can tell, I've been doing this job longer than you've been alive. So he's definitely very popular within the Personnel Commission and so I just wanted to recognize his hard work and say congratulations.
You're not 33 yet, Mr. Miller?
Well, you know, I'm not saying me. I'm much older than that, but all things considered, I'm sure that there's somebody that he felt could hire that he can say that to.
Congratulations to him. Thank you for reminding us of his service to our district. Any further discussion? Let's take our vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes 5-0. Next item is 16.3, Instruction Report.
Move approval?
Discussion. Let's take our vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes 5-0. Next item is 16.4, Finance Report A.
Move approval?
Any discussion? Let's take our vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That also passes 5-0. Next item, 16.5, Finance Report B.
Move approval?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, recuse myself from participation in Finance Report B on the consent calendar. I have a potential financial interest under Government Code 1091 and 87100. My husband works for a subcontractor who has done work for the payees.
Any further discussion? Let's take our vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I vote aye on that one. Any opposed? That passes 4-0 with one abstention. Next item, 16.6, Business Department Report.
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion?
I would just like to note that there are a lot of very generous donations, a lot of very generous donations, and they represent the school communities coming together and donating to their respective schools. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Craighead. Keep giving us money, folks. Any further discussion? Money for the students, of course. Money for the students.
Thank you.
Yeah, I did not like that laugh over there at the end of the money that goes straight to the students. Yeah. Yeah, we started at 8:30 this morning.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Let's take our vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes 5-0. Next item is 16.7, Purchasing and Contracts Report A.
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's take our vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes 5-0. Item 16.8, Purchasing and Contracts Report B.
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, recuse myself from participation in Purchasing and Contract Report B on the consent calendar. I have a potential financial interest under Government Code 1091 and 87100. My husband works for a subcontractor who has done work for the awardees.
Any further discussion? Let's take our vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 4-0 with one abstention. We will move on to other items, superintendents' items. 17.1, Williams UCP Quarterly Report. Dr. Baker?
Thank you. Just making the recommendation to accept the quarter, the fourth quarter report for Williams, which indicates no complaints, so no needs for resolution.
Do we have a motion? Oh, sorry. No needs for, thank you. Thank you. No complaints is good.
Secondly, I'd like to pass to Mr. Moskovitz for tonight's administrative assignment recommendations.
Good evening. On behalf of LaShelle Diggs, Director of Head Start, I bring before you two recommended promotions. One is Maricela Guido, Teacher on Special Assignment in Head Start to Early Learning Center Manager Head Start. The other is Amanda Kanbar, Teacher on Special Assignment Head Start to Early Learning Center Manager Head Start.
Move approval?
Second.
Let's take our vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes 5-0. Congratulations to our new appointments. Next unfinished business, we have none, so we will move on to Item 19, New Business. And Item 19.1, Approve Additional Members to the Community Advisory Committee for Special Education.
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I would just like to thank Shannon McCabe, Assenda Pitch, Judith Carey and Paloma Cato for stepping up and volunteering. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Yes, ditto, Ms. Craighead. Appreciate all the service for our CACA that our CACA board members put forth. Let's take our vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes 5-0. We will move on to Item 19.2, Our 2022 Facilities Master Plan. Mr. Miranda, welcome back.
So I figure many folks in our audience witnessed our presentation this morning capturing all the highlights of the facility master plan for 2022, but I figured this evening I could just share some of those highlights, maybe key points of the master plan before the vote takes vote for formal adoption.
You're not going to go through all 538 pages, Mr. Miranda?
You know, if we have the time, why not? So as Dr. Benitez noted, this is in fact a 488-page report, so very comprehensive in nature, very different in nature for us as well. We've had several master plans that the board has adopted in the years prior, primarily serving as updates to previous master plan efforts where we embark on a really a task where we update cost estimates and projects and so forth. This master plan was a bit different for us, being that it was really a ground-up effort starting from square zero, right? So starting with site assessments that took place last summer, jumping into a very heavy engagement effort where we captured feedback from stakeholders all across the district, preparation of a number of different subcommittees with folks chiming in on things such as sustainability, furniture replacement efforts and a host of project needs that we captured across the district. Master plans, just at the very elementary level, are geared to serve as roadmaps for future capital improvement projects. So what we did via this particular effort was take stock, just identify what we've done as a district, identify what's left to do, of course, captured some very high-level goals and recommendations, but also captured what these improvements should look like and could look like on a school-by-school basis. So when we talk about the 488-page report, a number of those pages sit within the Facility Report section because as you can imagine with 85-plus campuses, four or five pages per site, that's where all the meat is in the reports. We were absolutely looking for alignment with respect to our facilities and how they go hand in hand with our educational goals, mission and vision of the district, right? We know for a fact that facilities do go hand in hand with different program offerings. It's difficult to do all the great things we do as a district, all the great things the students do out there and teachers do without adequate and right-sized facilities, is what I would describe. We also know facility needs and program needs at the education level continue to change year after year, decade after decade, and we know, and it was just confirmed via this report, that our buildings continue to age, right? So it's becoming more and more of a challenge to meet our needs and program offerings as time passes and these buildings continue to age, of course. We also know there's a couple other unique challenges our district is facing from a facility perspective. We've declined in enrollment quite a bit as the decades pass and pass. As a result, we have quite a bit in terms of underutilized capacity. The majority of that underutilized capacity really sits within our aging portables, many of which have lived their, outlived their useful life as well. So we envision a process, and it's actually identified within the master plan, where we can in fact start removing a number of these portable classroom units in cases where we have stable enrollment. And again, we would look at this on a school-by-school basis. In those cases where the enrollment is in fact stable, we could remove a good chunk of portables and come back in with a permanent building on that particular campus. In several other cases, we could just outright remove portables and repurpose space. That could allow us to reach another one of our goals, which is the addition of green space on our school sites, addition of potential outdoor learning environments on our school sites as well, a lot of which can be accomplished simply by building up, right? And just gaining that footprint on campuses. One of the other highlights here is also meeting the needs of our diverse student population. I referenced a handful of programs that are out there on the Career Tech side of the house, amazing things that are happening within the district. We know to hit our equity goals, we need to have those program offerings across the entire district, right? So there's a number of improvements we can embark on from the facility side of the house to make sure that's possible. Also, I want to highlight just the changing needs and unique needs of our special ed students as well, right? So there's a number of things we can do from a facility perspective simply to allow for adequate space and different needs and offerings of that particular student group. Lastly, just want to highlight really two more things. One, the overall need, when all was said and done and this process concluded, we identified 3.5 to 3.8 billion in additional capital improvement needs, and that's as of today, right? We also know that number can continue to change in the years that follow because of course these buildings continue to age and we have a number of challenges just in the construction industry with labor shortages, supply chain issues and just increase in material cost as well. Last but not least, the report really highlights what I call 10 project priority buckets. So there's a number of different projects that are highlighted that could feed off of each of those buckets. This includes things such as modernization efforts, the addition of green space, sustainability being its own bucket, but also one of those that captures, is captured across different buckets, campus safety improvements, media center updates, just a host of different type of projects that are captured in the master plan. And with that, I can field questions.
Thank you, Mr. Miranda. Just a reminder to folks, if you check out YouTube, you can tune into our board workshop from this morning where Mr. Miranda, Mr. Rising, gave a very detailed presentation on the scope and breadth of our facilities master plan. And it's also available vis-à-vis our website as well.
Correct.
Any questions, comments, colleagues?
Thank you, David, for all of your work. I know this has been a long process and I want to thank you for making it clear that this is a new process. So for those of us who have been around the district or have older kids in the district, we've been through this kind of updating of a master plan. And to know that as you embarked on this, you decided that the best course of action was to look at our facilities with fresh eyes in 2022, I think, is really critical. We've learned a lot, obviously, over the last two years, but even the last five years of ways that we will better meet the needs of all of our students and as you said, our diverse student population moving forward. We talk a lot about, we don't go back to how things were, that we look forward based on the lessons learned over the last couple of years and that your team had the opportunity to do it right now gives us that opportunity, some long-term strategic planning around what facilities look like that will best serve students for the next 10 and 20 years. So I think that's a really critical piece for folks who have lived in the community for a long time or been part of the district for a long time to know that the risk really is fresh eyes 2022 with a couple of decades looking forward in the mix is critical. Thanks.
Thank you.
I would just add to that and really highlight the part where the average age of our buildings is 67 years and that a majority of our schools were built for a different educational era, a different time, and our needs have changed even in the last couple of years. Our needs have changed. So I appreciate the point of this new facilities master plan was created with a fresh set of eyes. This is a new document. This is not an update of a previous document. So thank you for that work. It wasn't done without a lot of care and attention. Thank you.
Ms. Otto?
Yeah, I want to compliment both you and Mr. Rising on the work that you've done over literally the course of a year, the involvement of the community in this planning process. And I think it's really a forward-looking document. It's identified based on your interviews and working with members of the community, working with members of your staff with a great program going forward. It's always important to not just refresh, but to go back to basics and especially coming out of this pandemic, as I hope we are, to take into consideration what people desire going forward. And by the way, so people understand what we've done, what we've said we're going to do in the past is still part of that plan. We're not dramatically or very much of any way changing what it was that we said before we were going to do. And so we're just another step down the road, so congratulations.
Yeah, Mr. Miranda, I'll just echo my colleagues' sentiments up here, but one of the things that you referenced right now that we talked about at length earlier was around fulfilling our vision and mission around excellence and equity. And our facilities allow for us to do things like increase our capacity- allow for us to do things like increase our capacity to offer career tech education classes, allow for green space to be reimagined on our schools, allow for the enrichment programs that Mr. Moskovitz, you know, talked about at our last session, for our schools to truly serve the communities in this century and meet the needs of today's students, but also the next generation of students. So applaud the effort and the thorough presentation that you gave this morning. If there are no further comments or discussion or questions, I will call for the vote. Oh, maybe we need a motion before we go to the vote.
I move approval of the 2022 Facility Master Plan, including the appendices.
Second.
Any further discussion? Thank you to all the community members, stakeholders, staff that showed up, that were involved in. I think you gave us over 600 people involved at some, in some way, shape, or form on committees or at the convenes.
Correct.
Let's take our vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes 5-0. Congratulations to you and the team. Good job, Mr. Miranda. So the next item, Mr. Miranda, before you speak to it, which is item 19.3, and it's covered up here, let me, Board Policy 3510.1, Green Schools, Green School Operations, Energy Policy. I'm going to make a motion in the spirit of the conversation that we had this morning and ask you and the team, including Mr. Rising, to include language around the aspirational goals that set targets for us in terms of dates and timelines, sort of on two levels, Mr. Miranda. One, in alignment with what the state of California, as we talked about earlier today, has already set for us, but two, to include sort of some strategic timelines that uphold the commitment that you, Mr. Rising, the team have expressed. You know, just to remind folks, we had a conversation this morning, and Mr. Miller, if you want to add and jump in here, and I just felt that it was important, and we do this for other things in our district, and actually you and Mr. Rising actually briefed us on some of the targets that the state of California has already set for 2045 and 2030, and the thing that stood out to me when you expressed that is that we're actually doing more in our district, and our vision and our goal has always been to lead, right? Not just to do things out of compliance, and you shared some of the things in which we're doing more. And so I'd like to offer a motion up if someone would want a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback those sentiments. I've stated before, I love the policy and the process that you all have went through to get where we are today, but with any goal, I would not feel comfortable if we didn't set overarching goals and timelines attached to it. And as these young people have expressed time and time again of our goals of not only meeting the state requirements but exceeding, I think that it is important to make sure that we have that language within the policy.
So what we would ask our board to consider on the vote is for you, Mr. Miranda, to just include that and present to us same policy that we, you know, applaud, and that many community members, including the students here today, had been working very closely with you on, that you include that for our August meeting, come back with that, and then that we consider taking action then for it. So that's what's up for us, colleagues. Further discussion? So the motion is to include, in the spirit of the conversation that we had earlier and in alignment with our state target dates, to include that in a revised policy. The meat, the heart of the policy remains the same. What we're including here is some dates and timelines for the aspirational part of the goals. That would be brought back to us in our August meeting.
So is the motion to continue this to August with the direction we're giving now?
Thank you, Mr. Otto, much clearer than I said it. Yes.
So not voting on current policy and bring an amended one in August, but...
Including that.
Right, but putting a continuance on it until August.
Correct.
Did I move that?
So I moved, seconded. We're in discussion still right now.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Thank you for clarifying that, Vice President. Let's take our vote.
Before we vote, I would just like to add that a lot of the students and Mr. Galogly, did I say that? All right. You've given us a lot of praise, and I don't feel that, I don't feel that we're worthy of all the praise, only in the, sorry, but only from the respect that, and I'm just speaking for myself, but you, as students, have shown so much determination and grit and persistence. You have had a clear vision of what you've wanted, and you have wanted us to pay attention to what's going on with the climate change and the environment, and you have wanted us to take action, and you have been clear on that vision and mission, and you have held us to task on that. And it's because of your determination that we're here now, or again in August, to vote on this, and I just want to say, that can't be understated, that we don't take that for granted, and sure, we've given our time to help you as we can, but the lion's share of the work has really been yours. So thank you, thank you for what you've done. As much as it's a learning opportunity for you, it's been a learning opportunity for us as well, and for your teacher sponsor. I believe you're also a Teacher of the Year from Long Beach Council PTA, and so I would just like to congratulate you on that one also. I don't think we've had a chance to do that in person, but I just wanted to mention that, that we are here today and then again in August because of the students and everybody else, Mr. Marsh, everybody else who have come here determined that we take action. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Craig. Ms. Kerr?
So I'm sure we'll have more conversation. I will definitely save some remarks for August when we do this in a, you know, in a different way, and we take a vote that isn't a continuance. But thank you to the students. I appreciate that you are here, and we will save the celebratory pictures potentially after a vote next month, so mark your calendars. But thank you again for continuing to engage with us at a time when I know policy's messy. I think that's probably one of the lessons that you've learned, and it's up and down and backwards and forwards, and it's not a lot of fun sometimes, but it's super important. So thank you for hanging in with us in those lessons learned for all of us.
Thank you, Vice President. So just to be clear, we're asking for this to be made stronger. We're not tabling this. It's to continue this so that we take action on it in the August meeting. Thank you, Mr. Miranda, for that. So now let's take our vote. All in favor?
Point of clarification, we are voting on 19.2?
This is 19.2, but we're voting on...
I understand.
Yes. I'm sorry.
This is 19.3.
Yes, 19.2 was a facilities plan that we approved. This is 19.3, Board Policy 3510.1, and I apologize, Ms. Otto, it's on the crease here, Green School Operations, Energy Policy. Yep, waiting until next month, August meeting, which is when, Dr. Baker?
Seventeenth.
August 17th. Okay, so appreciate the clarification for everyone, from everyone. So now let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes 5-0. Congratulations. Yeah, we'll be back in August. Next item is item 19.4, Resolution Number 071822-A, ordering an election to authorize the issuance of general obligation bonds establishing, it's got cut off here with my hole punch, specifications of the election order and requesting consolidation with other elections occurring in November 8, 2022.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion?
I can certainly provide a little bit of background information. So in a similar fashion to the Facility Master Plan and the board policy we just discussed, we also had a presentation this morning where we dove a little deeper with respect to the need, the master plan components, and the tie-in to this proposed bond resolution. So of course, law requires that school boards adopt a bond resolution to officially declare and put a bond measure on the ballot with respect to addressing capital improvement needs. With respect to the Facility Master Plan, and just a short while ago, we did the same in an abbreviated fashion, just in terms of describing the need that's out there. So wanted to again reiterate the fact that we have the 10-project priority buckets that we described previously, they're identified a little more clearly in the master plan document, but really getting us closer to reaching our educational mission and vision, right? There's quite a bit we're doing right now with respect to Measure E projects. We're going to continue to embark on those Measure E projects. We have funding in place, and there's allocations in place to continue to not just complete those projects, but really fulfill the desire of the voters who helped us pass that bond effort as well. So every one of the HVAC projects, modernization efforts, you know, new synthetic turf fields on secondary campuses and so forth, the projects we set out to do, we will continue to work on, right? So with respect to a new bond measure, which is what this bond resolution calls for, it's really to identify and address the needs that we've identified via this new master plan update, and again, starting to chip away at that additional 3.5 to 3.8 billion in proposed capital improvement needs, starting to identify and embark on projects that we described just a short while ago, the green space on campuses, the removal of portables, the additional spaces for career tech, really touching on equity quite a bit with respect to facility needs, doing every one of those new things via this bond effort. There's quite a bit that comes with placing a new bond on the ballot, which would be the November 8 ballot, and quite a bit that's identified via the bond resolution, including just the level of transparency that comes with this type of effort, and there's quite a bit, right? So many of which is called out in California Constitution, a lot of it called out in the Ed Code, and there's a lot of code references within the resolution language, which is also consistent with the language we called out in 2016, but really, a lot of it entails the level of transparency, the type of audits we need to perform as a district, both in terms of financial and performance audits. We also have to embark on audits at the project level whenever we secure state funding, so quite a bit with respect to different eyes on these expenditures that we're entrusted with, right? The establishment and reporting to a Citizens Oversight Committee is also called out in terms of the language built within the resolution. So we've done this before on the Measure K and Measure E side of the House as well, but the COC, Citizens Oversight Committee, is really there to serve as the eyes and ears for the community at large. So it's established via different representative positions, different stakeholders in the community. They come out and actually walk our sites and walk our construction projects. There's a number of meetings we have, at least quarterly. They ensure that we check those boxes in terms of financial and performance audit. There's a dedicated page on our website just with respect to the COC section and these audit reports and annual reports that they help us prepare and publish for the community. So just quite a bit with respect to transparency and oversight that I wanted to highlight. At this point, I can field any questions.
Colleagues?
Yeah, David, on that note around transparency, so you said that we've had a citizens oversight for our previous bond measures, we've had audits, those kinds of things. Those are available publicly for people to see how those audits have gone, how money has been spent since those bonds were passed, I think way back in 2008, the first measure.
Yes, so LBSchoolBonds.net, and then there's an actual tab for the COC committee, and every one of those audit reports are published and posted there.
And there are newsletters that go out, I believe your department sends out, that give updates on different bond projects that are happening?
Absolutely.
Okay, and I know we've heard a lot about the state budget and not as much the federal budget, about state funding, and one of the areas that I know folks have been fighting for is state funding for school facilities, and that hasn't always materialized. Can you talk a little bit about what the state of, if there's money to come from the state, and if so, how we would utilize that in the context of a bond program?
Absolutely. So we find ourselves in a position no different than most other school districts in California, where we just have quite a bit more need than there is dollars available, and the same goes at the state level. So even though there's statewide bonds, and there's been some of those in the past, those dollars get exhausted relatively quickly. Now, when in fact there is dollars available, be it for new construction or modernization efforts, there's a number of different formulas we have to comply with to determine eligibility, but we in fact apply for those potential state-matching dollars at every chance we get. So whether it's a new construction effort or a modernization effort, any project we embark on as a facilities team, we then look immediately to see if we can apply for state-matching dollars. We've secured quite a bit, right? So upwards of $100 million that we've secured to better leverage our local dollars, we'll continue to do so, but regardless, the need we have out there today, being at 3.5 to 3.8 billion, is going to far outweigh anything we can secure from the state.
Further discussion? So, Mr. Miranda, in order for us to be equitable and advance our educational vision and mission across all of our facilities in the district, the need that was actually identified was somewhere in the neighborhood of 3.8 billion. What this bond calls for is 1.7 billion, which is an absolute necessity if we are to actually implement our Facilities Master Plan, right? We need resources to be equitable. This bond, as it's proposed, allows for us to continue that process, but more importantly, or as importantly I should say, to actually fulfill the vision around our Facilities Master Plan as well. And part of that is this energy policy that we have before us. So can you talk a little bit about that, Mr. Miranda?
Yeah, that's very well put, and that's our ultimate charge here, right? So the reason we embarked on that facility update is not only to take stock and identify potential project needs and so forth, but really to get us more in line with our educational mission and vision and reach our equity goals as a facilities division, right? So there's the very reason we embarked on the process that we did with a ton of stakeholder engagement, the creation of a number of different subcommittees and so forth, again, a master plan informed by well over 600 individuals and different touches, be it in person or via the survey format as well. The project priority buckets that we described, or I've been describing today, are really well-informed and in alignment with respect to the feedback and input we heard from all of those stakeholders. So whether it's myself doing a facility update presentation in front of the board or in previous workshops, whether it's attending parent meetings or other stakeholder meetings, or some of the input we receive via this process, everything really feels in alignment with respect to the facility projects we'd like to embark on to get us much closer to reaching that educational mission and vision. Now, perhaps last comment, and you're right on, and you said it beautifully, we can't get there without the funding source.
Thank you, Mr. Miranda. Ms. Kerr?
Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback. When you talked about instructional technology and career technical education, we know a lot of people in the community express the desire that our students are college and career-ready. We know we have some great facilities in our advanced manufacturing lab at Jordan, and we've got our projects with the port, but we know that students want computer science, they want robotics, they want those spaces and the technology to support the careers of the future, and so when you talk about career tech ed, those are some of the things you're talking about, right? Those flexible, highly technological classroom spaces that will prepare students for the future.
Those are the very spaces, right? So big focus on being career-ready. A lot of the infrastructure updates or technology infrastructure updates we want to embark on are really the backbone of our systems, the fiber, the cabling updates, the things we've yet to hit with respect to our current bond. Also, again, just that tie-in to sustainability and the green schools component, you know, if we have a program offering across different parts of our district boundary, that's less miles driven, right? So right now, kids are being transported to and from a different school to reach a certain program. Perhaps we're getting less cars on the road, right, just in having those offerings.
Anything else, colleagues? I think we're ready for our vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes 5-0. Mr. Miranda, thank you. We are moving on to item 19.6, Board Reorganization. So this will be to serve President, Vice President, I'll take them separately, through December of this year. I will entertain nominations for President of our board.
I'd like to nominate Megan Kerr for President.
I second that nomination. That was the nomination I was going to make, actually.
Any discussion?
I accept.
That's good. Let's take our vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. Congratulations, President Kerr.
So normally, we would switch seats, but Dr. Benitez is...
Thank you.
Got some back injury today.
I was just going to ask us to roll and change.
You want to just roll and change? I can just do that, too. Okay.
So new President Kerr, can you preside over nominations for Vice President?
Sure. Can I make some comments first?
Absolutely. My apologies, absolutely.
Thank you, former President Dr. Benitez. I want to just say thank you to Dr. Benitez. It's been a heck of a year to chair meetings. I think we have had record public comment in the last year in various forms, whether it was recorded, or read, or in person and masked and not. Record public engagement around really important and really serious issues that have meant to a lot, a lot, to everyone. And you have handled it with grace and candor and moved our community through meetings that were really difficult. And I can't say thank you enough on behalf of me as a board member, but I think I can speak for my colleagues and the staff for the way that you have shepherded us through this last very, very difficult year as Board Chair. So thank you.
Thank you, President Kerr, and to my colleagues, and to our entire team, and to our community members as well. It's been an honor, a privilege. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay. I will entertain nominations for Vice President.
Not all at once, colleagues.
I nominate Doug Otto for Vice President.
I decline.
I nominate Diana Craighead for Vice President.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do you accept?
Actually, do you accept? Board Member Craighead?
I accept.
Please say yes, because please say yes. Not that. Never mind, you said yes. Any discussion? You are the new president. What am I doing?
It's all right. Takes a minute, doesn't it? I'm telling, the first meeting I came to after I was not Chair anymore, it takes a minute.
I can't believe that you let me go right now with continuing to do that.
I have a motion and a second for Diana Craighead as Vice President. We're ready for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Passes 5-0. Thank you, Ms. Craighead, for saying yes. This is my first time with this new numbering system on our agendas. We're going to move to number 19.7, the 2022-23 Certification of Signatures and Signature Authorities.
Will for approval?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Passes 5-0. We will now move to item 20, Report of Board Members. We will start with Mr. Otto, please.
Well, I would second what the remarks that were made by Ms. Kerr about this being quite an extraordinary year for the Long Beach Unified School District. And I think we've come through it better than can be expected. We face another year of moving forward. I think the staff and superintendent, the superintendent in particular, has done an incredible job of keeping the ball in the air and moving forward, and I'm eternally grateful for that. I think we all are. I'm looking forward to what's next. I'm looking forward to what we have on our plate, what we've decided to do to move forward, what we've done to try and maintain the reputation that we have as one of the, if not the, premier school districts in the state of California and indeed the nation. And I'm pleased to note the way that we all seem to be working together, listening to one another, and I think that there's more of that to come. And so this last week has been particularly exhausting. There's been a lot of things on our plate. If you would have told me on Tuesday that there was a 500-page report on facilities, I would have said, how can that be possible? But I saw it. And there's a lot going forward. I would also congratulate the students who helped out with our energy policy, and I think it was a learning experience for them in many ways, and in ways that you don't ordinarily get just in a classroom. That was a big thing to be on our agenda today. I think this bond measure is particularly important right now because we're in not the best of economic times. And it's very important that all of us who have voted for this and who believe in this bond measure, to get the word out to the public that it's needed, that if we want to continue to do the work we do, we have to do this, that the jobs that are required are well thought out, that this isn't unnecessary money, that this is very, very important money, and that based on what we've seen in terms of what's going on in the community, it's supported, it's warranted, and I'm glad that we've gotten over that hurdle of putting that on the ballot today, too. But the work has just begun on doing that. We have to run a campaign, we have to convince people, or not, that's the wrong word, we have to let people know how important this is and what it's going to take to, in these difficult times, keep things going. There are going to be a lot of distractions in the next several months, elections and people thinking about all kinds of other things besides the basic things that we do, including educating our youth. And so, Ms. Kerr, it's a big responsibility, and I know you're up to it. You've been a terrific board member, and I also wanted to add my congratulations to Mr. Benitez. I think you've done a great job this year. You've been very, very, very involved, and I think you've earned the respect, not only of the board, but people in the community who see that you're out there trying to figure out what's right and what equity and excellence actually means, and you've personified that. So that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Otto. Mr. Miller?
And I was going to start with that. I just wanted to send a big thank you to my friend, Dr. Benitez. Coming into this role, I knew that I had a lot to learn, but I felt that in regards to my leadership, as long as I allowed my heart for students to be the guiding light and a little bit of my polished nature from the professional world, and you get a happy mesh of a decent board member, I like to think. But oftentimes, jokingly here, my background slips out. E-dub, you guys get to meet him sometimes. A little silly, can be a little unpolished, but it also comes from the nature of my passion for people and our students in particular. When it comes to watching Dr. Benitez, he impressively is able to lead with his heart focused on the students and does it with so much diplomacy and articulation, and I have just been so impressed with you, my brother. And so I wanted to make sure that you got your flowers for how great you've been in this role over the past year, and I just want to thank you for that. So thanks again. Along those, well, the next thing that I wanted to highlight is, I know it's a little early here because we're not going back to school just yet, but I did want to make the announcement. I am going to be supporting and taking part in a number of back-to-school events occurring in the city of Long Beach. I represent one of the lowest economic parts of the city, and so I felt that it was important to partner with a number of organizations. So I'll be hosting or partner in a back-to-school event at Sheer Park on August 20th. That'll be in partnership with Councilmember Al Austin, while also working with a second back-to-school event over at Kings Park. That's going to be in partnership with 100 Black Men and Love Beyond Limits. With that, we'll be giving away as many things as possible in regards to school supplies and backpacks and things of that nature. And so I wanted to make sure that I got that out today, and the official notice will be going out later on this week.
Great, thank you. Ms. Craighead?
Thank you. All this talk about facilities got me thinking about the people who keep our schools in good condition over the summer. And so I just want to thank all the custodians and maintenance people that work even when the kids aren't there, to make sure everything is in good order, and also to congratulate Dr. Benitez on a very successful year, very wonderful, and good luck in the coming year. Actually, no, coming six months. Oh, yeah. That's right. This is a whole new system that we have to get used to, but I know you will make the most and best of this time.
Thank you, Dr. Benitez.
Thank you, President Kerr, and I want to apologize again for misstepping, but I want to congratulate President Megan Kerr. She has served this Board honorably for all of these years, and she is on to new possibilities and new opportunities. So it'll be awesome to have you here as our President, shepherding us the next five months. So I'm glad that you stepped up and accepted the nomination. For those of us that believe in the power of public education, in public education, public education as a great equalizer, it is an honor, a privilege, but a huge responsibility to serve on a public Board of Education and be a member, to uphold, advance, and represent our community's vision for what public schools should be, can be. And for me, today was a wonderful reminder of what we're tasked here to do as your elected board members. We're tasked with enacting policy, and we voted and passed on an incredibly important facilities master plan today that upholds what our facilities should, can, and can continue to be for the communities that we serve. I am only here because of the promise of public education. I am the first in my family, not just to graduate from college, but to graduate from high school. And I was able to do that because of the excellent public education that I received. And that's my commitment to our communities, and I know that that's the commitment of my colleagues and our entire team. So policy is big for us. Budgets, we need funding to be equitable. We need resources to advance our vision and mission around equity and excellence. And passing this bond allows for us, not that it's sufficient, but it's necessary, funding to be able to do what many people may take for granted, which is to offer capital improvements, to be able to offer the kinds of program services, educational experiences for students, many of whom, for 18 months, their own houses, their own homes, was their classroom. And so in order for us to fulfill the promise of our public education, we need to have classrooms, facilities, school sites, buildings, wellness centers, counseling centers, fields. We need to be able to offer to our students that have gone through so much, safe havens, clean havens, havens that they can be proud of. We saw some of the results from what our students, what our parents and our community members and our students want. Dr. Baker shared with us some of the preliminary results from our community vision sessions, and students want to feel valued and cared for and welcomed and safe and healthy, and they want to thrive, and we need facilities that offer that to them. Of course, we need the adults and the other students to provide all the nurturing and strength and celebration and guidance and support and to learn from our students. But we have students here with us today that exemplify the best of what we hope our students achieve, and that's your educational experience is not just inside the classrooms. You are all civically engaged. You've been here since 2020, many of you from before that, holding your elected officials, your systems leaders accountable to your future, right? Many of you shared for your siblings. I think a couple of you have even said for when you have kids. Some of you, I heard, I heard, and I was like, all right, thinking about kids right now. But you shared that you wanted this world to be a place where they could thrive. And in order for us to do that, we are going to, you know, vote on this very important policy that's based on your advocacy, your efforts, your work, and not just you, right? The communities as well. So again, a policy budget. And then we work very closely with our superintendent. Our third task is to hold our superintendent accountable in the best sense of the word. But it's accountability to our community's vision, and Superintendent Dr. Baker reaffirmed that today with her presentation on our board governance. We have board goals that we will develop with our communities. That will then be reflected in our strategic plan and our long-term efforts. That will then also be in alignment with our superintendent goals. So the way that we uphold our vision and mission and our community's vision for student success is to hold ourselves accountable as elected officials, to hold our superintendent accountable, and for that, our superintendent needs resources, she needs policies, and she needs goals that reflect our community's vision. And so we're going to be working on that in collaboration with our entire team. So I wanted to reiterate how important it has been for me to serve on this Board, to serve in the last year in my capacity as President, but we got a lot of work ahead of us, and some of the actions that we took today enable us to advance the promise of our public education system. So those are my comments tonight, President Kerr.
Thank you. And I'll just carry on with that. Mr. Otto mentioned that this system is special. This system works really hard to be successful for our kids, and that's not an accident. I have the honor of interacting with school board members from across the country on an almost weekly basis, and I get to see outside of our Long Beach bubble how incredible the system is, how incredible our students are, our community, our staff, our Board that works hard. And again, our schools are great, not perfect, and a ton of work to do, but not on accident. It's because this community, Long Beach, Lakewood, Signal Hill, and Avalon, have stepped up to support and invest in our kids over and over through bond measures, through community groups like the Assistance League, who help with uniforms, and food drives, and the Century Club that supports athletes. Long Beach is a special place that we take care of each other in community in various ways, and that's what this community visioning is about. It's calling on those different community groups who may or may not see themselves as partners, but we know that we couldn't do this work without them, to step up and to continue to serve and invest in and lift up and celebrate students, not just the ones in front of us, but as Diana said, her little brother and sister, and for the next generations of kids. So yes, we have work to do, and I am so proud to be part of a community that has long invested in our public schools and look forward to us continuing to do that work. Again, Dr. Benitez, thank you for your work this year. Dr. Baker, for your leadership and your teamwork together to lead the Board and senior staff into the what's next. To those who presented, the facilities master plan feels like a huge... To those who presented, the facilities master plan feels like a huge sigh of relief. I think David is back there looking a little lighter from the incredible work of that department. And I just want to make sure, Alan and David, you weren't in the room earlier when you got your accolades from this team of students, that you invested your time and your professionalism to, to lead them, to listen to them, to encourage them, and to help them form policy for one of the largest urban school districts in the country. So thank you as staff members for doing that. I'll pass it off to Dr. Baker for her report.
Thank you. I'll be really brief tonight. So many times today, I have thought about the adage, "If you want to go fast, go alone; if you want to go far, go together." I thought about that this morning during Board Workshop. We talked about governance practices, you talked about the facility master plan and discussed the bond and the green policy. We have been so intentional about how to proceed over the last couple of years, and so today is an element of going together, slowing down to go together. And so just really reflecting on that as, as also a way into the future. The role of President is a huge responsibility beyond being a Board Member for the year that you serve. And Dr. Benitez, it has been said many times, but it has been a pleasure to work with you as, as President. Getting through this year together, I can just think of all of the planning and all of the outside of the meeting preparation that you have served in, and I just truly appreciate it, to be a member of your team and now led by Ms. Kerr is really an honor as a superintendent. Ms. Kerr, I look forward to the next few months. I know that as you think about your time, your legacy on the Board, you have big plans for these few months ahead, and I just know that you and the Board will make really good use of that time. So I, I look forward to that. And I'll just end there. Thank you for a great day of learning, for combining a workshop with a Board meeting and for what today means in terms of the symbols of excellence and equity as we go forward into the future.
Thank you. Are there any announcements, colleagues? Okay, I have one. It is Disability Pride Awareness Month. So Happy Disability Pride Awareness Month. There is a Long Beach event happening, there's a rally happening on Tuesday, July 26th. Jennifer Kumiyama, the future ADA facilitator for the city, I don't know if she started her job yet, is coordinating that. It's happening at Harvey Milk Park, I believe, at 5:30 PM on July 26th. So be there to celebrate. That's my only announcement. Any other announcements? All right, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment until Wednesday, August 27th. Great, thank you.
I think it's the 17th.
Sorry, August 17th, 2022.
Some move.